I'll ask Bridgette to tell us about the hybrid meeting protocols and such.
I'll do abbreviated. Good evening and welcome to the September 9th Planning Commission meeting. We haven't been here in some time. We do have Zoom as a hybrid, as well as in person. We give the planning or the public three minutes to speak. We start with the public in person and then move to Zoom. Our meetings are televised on PC TV as well as the YouTube channel for, I'm sorry, Channel 27 and PCT. We do have translation this evening as well. And we did have one memo that went out for the Correia's project and it's been posted on the project or the agenda under the project. And the commissioners received that this afternoon. And that is all I have for this evening, so I'll give that back to you.
Thank you. Before we do the pledge of allegiance, I just want to acknowledge a brand new planning commission member is with us tonight, Christopher Del Negro. We're very pleased to have you. And Chris comes to us with a lot of great real world experience, including serving on the planning commission in Millbrae for two years recently. So, welcome. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May we have a roll call, please, Bridgette?
Yes, Commissioner Rems.
Here.
Commissioner Del Negro.
Here.
Commissioner Gorn.
I am here.
And Chair Riddick.
Here.
We have Commissioner Hernandez's absent this evening.
Our first item is consideration of the minutes of our last meeting, which was way back on June 10th. If nobody has any comments or corrections on that, could we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? And you'll probably abstain, Chris, I imagine. Thank you.
Thank you.
This is the point in our agenda where we invite members of the public who are present or watching online to address the planning commission and comment on anything in the world you'd like to, other than the things that are on the agenda that are coming in a very few minutes. If anybody would like to, please, Julie. All right. Well, in that case, yes, we all want to recognize Margaret's service. I believe you were on the planning commission for about four years, some of which were a bit tumultuous. And you did good service last year as chair during especially controversial times. And in recognition of that, Margaret, it's my honor to, on behalf of staff and the commission, to present you with this plaque in honor of your service and also your very massive name placard from all those years. So, thank you for your service. And would you like to say anything?
Good e- Can you hear me?
Yes.
Good evening, everyone. I just want to say thank you for the recognition. I enjoyed working with staff and with my fellow commissioners and with the public. And it was an interesting time, especially last year when I was chair during some challenging, interesting projects. That's, and so thank you so much for this recognition. I appreciate it.
You deserve it. Please do, Dave. Vice Chair Gorn would like to comment.
Oh, I just wanted to say, a lot of people are wondering why you were leaving. So Margaret is moving to the East Coast to be with, closer to her family. So she loved Half Moon Bay, loves Half Moon Bay and wants to stay and liked the planning commission even. So for me, I thought she was a perfect planning commissioner. Always with the data, always like every opinion backed up, every question really backed up by, by the data, the concerns that she saw in front of her with the, with the project itself. So wonderful job, just terrific. Thank you.
Commissioner Rems, please.
Mr. Chairman, I'd just like to add my few thoughts about Margaret. I haven't worked with her very, very long. I don't know her very well, but the few times that we sat down and talked, I really enjoyed it and I enjoyed the short time we had together on the commission, trying to make this more beautiful community. And I still lament, since I heard about your resignation, about finding the time to walk that coastal trail that we talked about, just to inspect it and talk about things. So Godspeed and I wish you well and good luck and all of that. And so, once again, it was a pleasure. Thank you, Margaret.
Do you mind if I say a few words, Chair Riddick?
Of course not, Director Lico.
Well, first of all, I feel like I got special time with Margaret because she was the chair when I first started here. And so we got to have one-on-one meetings and she's just really, just a pleasure as a person to talk with. But I also really respect her thirst for knowledge, as Commissioner Gorn was sort of indicating, that she always had data with her. But she was always taking classes, going to seminars and reading up on issues. And at the same time, I really respect the fact that she, she was never afraid to ask a question if she didn't know something. So I will miss you and I really thank you for introducing me as the Community Development Director to the planning commission, really. Thank you.
Thank you for that. Let me present these to you, Margaret, please. Our first public hearing item is an application for a coastal development permit and a setback variance for a project at 759 Correa Street. Ms. Okowi-Wilson, I believe this is yours?
Yes, thank you, Chair Riddick, and good evening, planning commissioners. I will be presenting to you on a proposed project at 759 Correa Street, which includes an addition which will require a variance to the existing residence and demolition of an existing garage and then construction of a new detached garage. The subject property is 759 Correia's. This is located actually on the border of our Heritage Downtown and the South Downtown Neighborhood. The requested permits are coastal development permit, architectural review, and a setback variance. The zoning of the property is R1B2, which is single-family residential, and its land use designation is medium-density residential. The site is developed with an existing single-family residence and detached garage. The residence dates back to as early as the 1870s in terms of when it was first built. It was, the site is bordered by existing single-family on all sides, other than to the east, where the Arroyo Leone perennial stream exists. Due to the presence of the Arroyo Leone perennial stream, there is adjacent ESHA to the site, ESHA being environmentally sensitive habitat area. So the applicant applied for preliminary review and environmental review back in 2022 to do a biological resource evaluation for the site. The biological resource evaluation looked at a study area of the site and a 200-foot buffer surrounding the site. This is in accordance with Land Use Plan Policy 6-8, which requires sites adjacent to ESHA to have a biological study. The biological study helped identify the required buffers in accordance with other land use plan policies. Land Use Plan Policy 6-49 identifies using a 100-foot top-of-bank buffer for the site. However, this 100-foot top-of-bank buffer includes the entire building site. Therefore, there is a Land Use Plan Policy 6-50, which allows for a reduced buffer. That amount is based on the specific water course that's nearby. And so being that this was the Arroyo Leone, it allows for a 20-foot reduced buffer if there's no alternative building site. In this case, there's, there's not. And also encourages in that case that the design should maximize the buffer and use design alternatives. So you'll see how that's been incorporated into this project. The BRE found that the subject property is highly disturbed. It exists, existing vegetation is mostly just ornamental and invasive plants. But the general study area and nearby area does have some potential habitat for monarch butterflies during the overwintering season, allant hummingbirds, and then steelhead trout in this stream. This is mostly located within the eucalyptus. That's further back on the property than where you'll see the proposed addition is. And then the California red-legged frog and San Francisco Gardner State snake were found to be unlikely or just not have any suitable habitat to occur on the site. So as I mentioned, the proposal includes an addition to the front of the existing residence. This addition is about 121 square feet to the residence itself, as well as in addition to the covered porch, which would be about 181 square feet. It also includes the demolition of the existing detached two-car garage and the construction of a new detached garage, which consists of three parking spaces, but by code, it's two, which you may have seen in the staff report, but could really likely accommodate up to three cars, so increasing the parking in that area. And it would also include a second-story residential office space. Here you can see the development standards. A memo did go out earlier today identifying an error in this table within the staff report. That's been corrected and it's in the agenda packet, as well as was circulated to the commission earlier today. As you can see here, the orange rows are where the setback variance would be required. And I will show a site plan helping show this more as we go through the presentation. But just to give you an early idea, the garage meets all required development standards, including setbacks and the maximum building envelope. Just the addition to the residence would require a variance. And so here you can see the minimum front setback is typically 25 feet. It's existing at around, just beyond eight feet. However, you'll also see that this is, it is a bit difficult to define some of these setbacks based on the property when we look more closely at it. Additionally, the other variance would be for the street-facing side setback, where it exists as 10 feet. It would remain at 10 feet, but there would be an addition further into it, so more structure within that same setback area. So as you can see here, this is the existing site plan. I tried to highlight that property line in blue on the front there. As you can see, there's several right turns on that property line. And this is part of what makes it difficult to define exactly what should be the front setback, a side setback, and so on. The two orange lines you're seeing, those are the setbacks where the variance would be required, although this is the existing site plan. So the closest definition staff could find would be identifying a street-facing side setback and a front setback. However, it's quite a unique lot. Here you can see the proposed site plan, and I will show another slide that, in a few minutes here, that highlights where that variance is. But you can see here, you can also see the garage is in the same location, it's just slightly larger.
Can you go back one slide just for a second? Okay, thank you.
So the garage here is in the same location. It does move about two feet forward, but there is an access easement. It remains outside of that access easement. Additionally, that the variance would preserve the enjoyment and the property rights, the preservation of the property rights. And here, this is a rather small addition. It makes up less than 1% of an additional lot coverage, so would typically be a very minor permit, but becomes larger due to the unique shape of the lot. Additionally, the applicant provided their variance burden statement and they're seeking that this would help them clean up the floor plan on the interior as well, to allow them to better be able to utilize the house and the entry to the house being much more prevalent. And essentially even have better curb appeal by being able to see that actual entryway to the property, which currently is a bit difficult to identify from the right-of-way. And additionally, that the third finding being that there's no adverse impacts as a result of the variance. Here, it's not encroaching towards any neighboring properties. The neighboring properties all remain setback far away, as you'll, I actually did not include a slide showing that, but if you look on the street view, you would see they're quite far away still. And then additionally, that typically where there might be a front setback variance or a street-side facing setback, there might be a line of sight concern, which is typically the intent of those setbacks to some extent. And here you really wouldn't have that, being that it's a dead-end street. There's not a corner, crosswalk, or moving traffic that could be, have the visual line of sight inhibited as a result. So here, just focusing in more on where that variance is located on the, the subject And then here you can see it even more zoomed in and better highlighted, that it would be filling in a portion of the building. And then there's even where that existing encroachment is, being an orange, but then a slightly more increase in red. This, apologize for the very blurry picture, but the, this is the aerial view from Google Street View, which, just to show you that this is where the variance would be as well, filling in that entry as-is and then creating a larger, more prominent entryway with the covered porch. This is the front elevation, the west elevation. So as you can see, the changes are relatively minor, but incorporates some dormers as well and just makes that entryway a bit more visible, but does create some more visual interest as well along the front of this house. This is the south elevation, so this is actually the side that is most visible from the public right-of-way. It cleans, the addition would clean up some of the existing roof lines that you can see on the top, are a bit unique, likely through many additions over time. And so, and you would be able to see that covered porch, which would also indicate where that entry is going to be. Here's the elevation of the garage, as-is. It's a single-story garage, a two-car garage with a very large garage door taking up almost the entire facade. So the addition of an additional garage space, but also breaking that into two separate garages helps and is in alignment with our single-family residential design guidelines, which encourages this for three-car garages. And additionally, just the second story also helps provide a bit more visual interest to it, makes it a bit less of a blank facade there. Overall, so the project was found to be exempt based on the following sequent sections listed here. Its staff finds it to be in substantial conformance with our single-family residential design guidelines and would improve the house to be more in conformance with those, as well as the project meets all development standards, other than the need for the setback variance. And the review and project is also in conformance with the land use plan policies as well. Staff is recommending to approve the coastal development permit, architectural review, and setback variance to allow the addition, the demolition of the garage and the construction of the new garage with the second-story residential office space. Thank you.
Do commissioners have any clarifying questions for Okowi?
I do.
Vice Chair Gorn, please.
How many variances are we talking about here? Because I see a lot of like, like how the variances can be addressed, but are there two or are there three? Are there more?
I guess you would call it two because-
The front and the side.
A side and a front, yeah.
So the front one is more that little rectangle that's kind of pushed back away from the street and, yeah, so I know we're not deliberating, but that seems really minor. But then the, the other one is the side, and tell me about that. What?
Yeah, so you can kind of also see the two setbacks do slightly form into one, the dashed line being the way the applicant could find. Let me show the larger. There's a pretty, it's difficult to see here, but there is a dashed line that the applicant provided to show just-
We could use Okowi's slides back on the monitors, please.
Oh, sorry. I thought you had them.
Just so you understand, thanks.
Do you have them back or?
No.
Okay. Yeah, so there's a, the applicant, to the best of their extent, tried to show these setbacks, so you can see where it kind of curves through the property. So that general area is where we're talking about the setback. So they do kind of merge into one. Like I said, it is really difficult to define in this case, but there is a front and a side.
The front and the side.
Yeah.
That small little-
That right-hand turn, yeah.
Is the front.
Mm-hmm.
Really small. But then the sideline, the issue is the very important, right? The sideline, go back, right? Oh, sorry. Sorry about that. So the front one, it's very clear what that is, but can you, it's not very clear what the side variance, where it is right there.
Recording in progress. So, yeah, like you said, the front one is where that little fill-in would be. The, where you can see the orange and the red square here, that is where the covered porch would move forward and that's existing lawn area.
Uh-huh.
On the subject property, you can kind of see here, that is lawn between their property.
Oh, that's helpful.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you very much.
Commissioner Del Negro, please.
Is there any impact on emergency vehicles turning around inside the space in that area?
So previously, there were discussions involving the abandonment of the right-of-way. That was the initial course that the applicant did speak to the city about. That was not approved because that would have, from my understanding, fire did have some concerns in that they wanted to ensure that remained right-of-way for their access and turnaround. But given that this is all on the subject property, they're remaining on their property, there shouldn't be any concerns in terms of emergency vehicle access.
Other clarifying questions? Well, let's ask for comments from the public at, and at this time then, either online or in the room.
I have no speaker cards. I know one online.
Tim, what?
Oh, I have the Al, I have the Al.
Yeah. You can.
Yeah? Feel free, please.
So my name is-
I'm gonna, I'm gonna open the public hearing, just to be safe. Thank you.
My name is Tim Pondon, I'm the applicant. So a couple of things about the property in addition. It's a 70-foot wide right-of-way that was established after the home was built, right up to the front door. So this kind of encroached on the rights of the owner of the property at the time. This house was built prior to the mapping of the street. So it's kind of a unique situation there, where the rights were actually kind of given away at that point. And, and I think Okowi presented most of the project, you know, very well. And the other thing is I don't quite understand why the abandonment wasn't granted or our request wasn't. The fire district has very specific rules on fire truck turnarounds, and this street isn't long enough to warrant one at the end from the intersection that's- isn't long enough to warrant one at the end from the intersection that's near it. The property is well within 150 feet of the intersection, so that a fire truck could actually pull down and pull back out without having to, you know, and this meets CDF standards for that. There's also a fire hydrant down there. There's also a giant tree on public property in the right-of-way, a heritage tree, five feet in diameter. It's, I forget the type of tree that it is, but you can see it. It's a walnut tree. And, you know, this whole thing looks like his lawn when you drive down the street. I mean, it will never, you know, it looks like it's been his lawn and will always be. And I can't imagine, you know, an improvement to the street 70 feet wide at that point, at that small location at the end of the street. The roof, the way it sits now, will be simplified. I mean, it's a great raccoon habitat, the way they have it now, because there's like a roof built on top of a roof, on top of a roof. And, you know, that first house, that first gable that you see actually goes all the way through. And then they kind of just threw other roofs on top of it. And my idea, my idea was try to make it into a single plane and then, you know, articulate it with some dormers, just to give it some feature and some life to the interior, because it's fairly long inside. And of course, we couldn't go out the back because the creek's there. And we wanted to keep it to a minimum. And the floor plan, if you look through it, is pretty convoluted. You have to walk in and around, and the master bedroom's right, you know, it's, so our idea was to, you know, rationalize the floor plan and bring it more into line with what's, you know, currently, currently thought. So anyway, thank you.
No, thank you. I can't help you with your disagreement with the, the fire department, but take to heart your comments about the unusual nature of the lot. Would anyone else like to address the commission on this matter? Nothing online, Bridget?
No, I have no one raising their hand online.
We'll close the public hearing on this and invite commissioners to deliberate.
I guess I see no real problem with this personally. The, the variances are pretty far setback away from the street. I did worry slightly about when you do the construction, that you might intrude on this riparian setback in, if you go past the, if I were staging it, if I were construction, and I would use that sort of triangular area to the right of the house to, to park everything. And, and I would worry a little bit about that. But, but that's the only thing that I see that is possibly problematic.
Thank you. Commissioner Rems?
I have no issues with this project, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you for that.
Ready to approve it.
Commissioner Del Negro?
I really saw a lot of positives here between the clean lines on the roof. No impact on the trees, which was great. That's a beautiful tree out front. Glad to hear there's nothing impacting on the trees. And there was no tangible growth towards the creek, obviously very positive in my opinion. And it did clean up the floor plan, which I liked as well. It seemed to be, to me, a very pragmatic and conscientious plan about the environment around it. My only questions really were about access to the rear of the house in case of a fire. There is a terrace back there. It's in the forest area. Obviously, at some point, people were using it for something. It looks like it's been kind of cleaned up since then, but, you know, I'd always be conscientious about fire risk in a house like this on the creek area with that vegetation behind it, keeping a wide enough room for somebody to get back there and be able to alleviate fire if it does happen. And it seems like there's a wide enough corridor back there with the, with the path back. Obviously, I'm happy to see that somebody cleaned up the storage of materials that was back there by Google, I guess, Maps. You could see that there was some stuff back there that's no longer there now. And that's really nice to see that cleaned up. So overall, I thought it was a very good package. I have no conflict with it.
Thank you for that. I, I agree with my fellow commissioners. I appreciate the fact that the activity on this project will be as far from the creek as is possible. And I appreciate the fact that our, our setback laws were probably different in 1870 than they are today. So to move things along, I'm going to make a motion to approve this coastal development permit and architectural review with setback variance, as stated in the resolution at hand.
I would second. Can I get some assurance that the staging for construction would not include that area off the gravel drive?
Yeah, I can, I can speak to that. There are, the biologists did provide best management practices that have been incorporated throughout the conditions. These include, there's to be no work within environmentally sensitive habitat. The staging has set distances. It's a, it's a small project, so there shouldn't be things like refueling on-site, but that is supposed to be more than 100 feet, so really that even needs to be off-site. And so there shouldn't be any work or staging within the buffer or an environmentally sensitive habitat, and there's conditions that the applicant will need to agree to and follow throughout construction.
Or in that little triangle. This is what I'm asking about.
The little triangle, I will show picture. It still shouldn't occur within that area, but it is existing gravel area back there that is still outside of the buffer and the environmentally sensitive habitat where that brown is. But we can, if, if that is a concern, I, I would say we could clean up the conditions to provide more clarity that it shouldn't occur within that area either. But for now, it's specific more to setbacks and the type of, of work or staging.
Yeah, I would leave it to you. Thanks.
I don't think we're required to have a roll call vote for everything, are we?
I don't think so, no.
Well, everyone's already expressed their approval of it, so. Can I just, all in favor, say aye?
Yes.
Any opposed, say nay? Motion passes. I'm sorry, Bridget, we won't relieve you of that duty every vote, but. Thank you, folks. Our next item for public hearing is the application for the sign program and sign permit having to do with the south of Wavecrest Trails. Sarah Polgar of Coastside Land Trust being the applicant. And Mr. Scott Phillips to present, I presume?
Yes, thank you, Chair Ruddock, and members of the planning commission. Nice to see everyone. I hope everyone had a nice summer. All right. So as you mentioned, this, this project involves a sign program and sign permit for the Coastside Land Trust North Wavecrest Phase Two Trail. And the project site is located a little ways south of the Poplar Beach parking lot, south of the Phase One of Coastside Land Trust Trail, and then west of the, sort of the western terminus of Wavecrest Road by Smith Field, and then north of the end of Redondo Beach Road. Now, the planning commission approved the, the project that's under construction right now, back in 2023. And for the, you know, the construction of the trail, the parking lot, as well as the, you know, stairways down to the beach. And included with that approval was a condition of approval requiring a separate submittal for a sign program. And so that's really the, the purpose of this item on the agenda this evening. And like, the trail is currently under construction, and right around the same time as construction started, the application was submitted for the sign program. Okay, and now the signs are kind of getting into the, the nitty-gritty of what's included in the signs. The, the slide on the screen right now shows the sign layout, and includes the installation of coastal access, interpretive and wayfinding signs. You know, and, you know, when you look at this, it, it does seem a little busy, seems, you know, the, the density of the signs seem, seem a little much. But part of this is that, you know, the, the sign designer that Coastside Land Trust selected, they, they really spent a lot of time on this layout, and they, as, just to give you an idea, this, the, the scale of this is an inch equals 125 feet. And now, instead of just putting dots, the sign designer actually superimposed little pictures of each of the signs, which are clearly out of scale, and bring a little more attention to the, each of the signs compared to what actually will be installed on-site, or at least what's proposed. Now, so I guess my point being that it, it does give the illusion of, you know, a little more signs than what would actually be installed. Now that said, 49 signs are proposed, and it includes, you know, the signs that you see here, as well as parking lot disabled access signs, new restroom signs, and vehicle circulation signs. Now, tho- those signs do not require a sign permit, so those are excluded from the 49 signs and limited to the, the parking lot areas. Now, the applicant also thought it would be helpful to, for me to show the commission this slide. This is just the trail. And in total, approximately three miles of trail would be installed, which is under construction currently. And then the next three slide, or let's see, I've got a, this slide shows a, gives you a summary of the signs that are proposed, the 49 signs totaling, you know, 124 square feet. Now, probably the most prominent signs would be the, the vehicle directional signs. Two of these would be installed along Redondo Beach Road, the sign on the left, and then also the, you know, the, the orientation signs, the, the little map on each of the trailheads. So the sign on the right would be installed at the three trailheads and not on the, the interface between the Phase One, Phase Two. So ju- two along Redondo Beach Road and then one at the Wavecrest Trailhead. Now, the wayfinding signs, the slides, or the signs shown, so the two on the left there, they would be the same size. Five of them would be installed. One of them includes informational, as well as the, the larger directional sign. And then the bulk of the, the signs proposed would be the, the directional, the smaller of the two rectangular signs, as well as the post signs at each of the intersections along the, the, the new trail. So anywhere you have an intersection along the, the new trail, one of the post signs would be installed. Now, last but not least, they do have 12 interpretive signs that would be installed. And the idea behind this is they would, this would give the trail user some information about the habitat within the area, as well as identifying wetlands and give information, you know, pertinent information to the trail users. Now, a couple of things just to touch upon, you know, compliance with the sign code. Our local coastal land use plan does have some reference to trail signage and then the California Environmental Quality Act. Now, as far as the sign code, the sign, sign programs allow the planning commission to authorize unique sign situations that don't normally fit into the normal sort of sign, sign permit issuance. So this is definitely a unique situation where we've got, you know, you know, the, the multi-user trail and, you know, parking lot, coastal access. This certainly would fit into the, you know, realm of a sign program. Now, part of that is because typically, you know, you're allowed one, one sign plus one additional sign per frontage. That would only, only leave Coastside Land Trust the ability to install three signs absent a sign program. So it really makes sense in this case to, you know, for Coastside Land Trust to pursue a sign program. Now, you may have noticed in the resolution, there is also a reference to a sign permit. Normally, once a sign program's in place, then staff would use the sign program to review any sign permit. We've included the approval of the sign permit if, you know, you know, as long as the planning commission feels that's appropriate. Now, there is, you know, coastal access associated with this proposal. You know, the signs would identify coastal access. Our normal procedure is to, you know, request comments from coastal staff when anytime there's coastal access involved. We did receive, you know, some, a little bit of feedback from our, our coastal staff representative, primarily on the, the vertical access stairways, that apparently in other places in the state, there, they've been, their code enforcement division has really been battling folks trying to privatize public stairways. So they, they asked that an additional condition of approval be added, requiring a si- signs at the bottom of the stairways to advertise anyone that may be walking along the beach that didn't access, you know, the trails from Redondo Beach or the trailheads that Coastside Land Trust is constructing currently, just to notify them that, hey, this is coastal access. And, you know, we felt that that was, you know, an important thing to add. So you may have noticed that condition B2 does ask for two new, two additional signs at the bottom of the new stairways. So I wanted to point that out. Now, the sign program also advertises habitat protection, which there's also policies in our land use plan that talk about, you know, preserve, preservation of habitat. And then part of this project also has, there's a habitat restoration component. So the, the habitat restoration signs would also advertise that. Now, you know, the PUDs and bluff-top areas are considered visual resources as identified in our land use plan. You know, the signage has been designed to blend with the natural environment, using earth-toned colors and, you know, not, you know, overly, you know, noticeable as, you know, from a long distance. So the idea is that the new signs would blend with the landscape. And, and sign programs are categorically exempt from sequoia, section 15311A, which calls out accessory structures and on-premise signs. So we, we feel that that exemption is appropriate. And, you know, just to, you know, we recommend the planning commission conduct a public hearing. We did receive one email correspondence from Chair Ruddock, just noting about the, you know, the amount of signs included in the proposal. We did forward that email on to the commission as well as the applicant. And we recommend approval of the sign program, as noted in the resolution. That concludes my presentation. I'm happy to answer any clarifying questions. We also have the applicant here this evening. Thank you.
Yeah, I'd welcome hearing from the applicant to clarify, as I said in that email, what, how, how do we understand what the right number of these signs are? So we welcome former planning commissioner Sarah Polgar to the, to the stand.
Thank you, Chair Ruddock. I'm Sarah Polgar with Coastside Land Trust, and I appreciated your questions in the, in the comments that you had. I'll be honest, I don't know exactly how to answer that. But what I can say is that I think, to be clear, we were in, in laying this out, trying to, meaning we being with the consultant, and then also. with the consultant and then also in knowing our experience in, in terms of this area and looking at the, the casual trails and the kind of interest in what people are, might be interpretive opportunities, we were trying to identify where would be the best places for the different types of signs, where we need to have stay on trail signs and it's, so we were basically, that's the kind of basis of how we were looking at this. And I think there's, from our perspective, there's flexibility. Uh, so if we, if the commission's going, looking at it, ah, that's a lot of interpretive signs or stay on trail signs, I don't, I don't think we're married to having them all. I will say that as the trail, um, is, you know, once the trail's open and people are starting to use it, we will discover where there's places where, huh, that is a highly valuable restoration area. For instance, we're really trying to restore, um, Corse's popcorn flower there, and it would be great if we could make sure, like, we really want to let people know that they should stay out of there. And it also might be helpful to have interpretive signage there to help them understand why that's valuable. Uh, so I would, I would say that there's a lot of flex, like, from our perspective, it isn't set in stone that we have to have, at least, I think there are some areas where we know that there's casual trails and we really do need to have a sign. Um, so some of them, I would say, I'd keep that one, um, but others maybe not. I also do want to point out that this diagram, part of what can be a little confusing is those, uh, there's a lot of things that look like Ts on there, and those are the post signs that are, you know, the six inch, and they have the little, um, placards that show, and the reason that they're look like there's three or four or two of them, um, at a corner is that it's just showing you what's on each side. It's not actually four of them, um, but it does look a little overwhelming, um, on there. Uh, those, I would say, to be honest, I wouldn't want to, um, remove any of those. I think out of the 49 signs, 10 of them, I think, if I done my counting right, 10 of those, let's see, um, I can't remember which ones of those, but, um...
Post directional.
Yeah, so 10 of them are those, and those are really valuable, to help people know how to get to the beach, um, you know, and they'll be very simple, like with a, you know, have an arrow with a, you know, beach umbrella and, you know, so, and they use very, uh, standard, uh, symbology. So I, I, I would encourage it not, um, you know, go limiting on those, and they're also extremely, in terms of an impact, a visual impact, they're not, uh, you know, they're just a post. Also, um, I think, uh, there, the signs themselves are not as big as the interpretive signs that are on the existing 50 acre, uh, the, the Bird Trail, the third of my, we try, the, um, consultant urged us to use much smaller ones because she was pointing out that, first of all, um, it's a lot to try to develop content, a huge amount of, for one sign, and she's for exactly the reason of being able to post, uh, to mount them on the fence, because there's a, the split rail fence, she said, that's a really nice, low-key way to, um, install signage, and so she recommended. So a lot of these signs, they are much smaller than the, for instance, the interpretive signs that are on the existing, um, 50 acres. I also, um, sorry, I had written down a couple of things. I do think, part of the reason why I suggested including the trail map that shows the distances, it has the red trail, as I wanted to point out, because to help understand, is, um, that at the south side of the stairs, um, there's a little trail that connects up to the, the, the main coastal trail. That's almost 200 feet, and it looks like nothing on there, but these are big distances. So, um, I don't know that we'll, like, it, it seems pretty crowded, but it prob- it isn't as crowded as, as it may seem, let's put it that way. Again, that's not saying that we're not open to adjusting the number, reducing the numbers. I'm just wanted to kind of point out the scale of it. Um, I actually dragged my husband out and we went out and held up a sign of the correct size at every single location to see what it would look like. So just to get a feel for it as well, um, we're out there a lot, and it, they are ver- they really are not much in this, in the scale of this size of a project area. But again, I just, uh, wanted to point that out, because it's, it's hard to tell from this. And then I did want to point out, I know that one of the comments had to do with the number of signs near the stairs, and I, um, I do think it's important to have the, um, what's called, it's, it's an interpretive sign at the top, um, but I think that's really valuable because there's a lot of confusion, uh, for people about how far this beach is, like, when they're going down, like, will they be able, if they walk one way or the another, where are the other beaches, what's the distance, um, things like that. Just even being familiar that there are some pretty big title changes and that, you know, and having some information about that, that's what we had anticipated, putting on the two signs that are at the tops of the stairs. Um, it, it's not that we're gonna, you know, give them everything under the sun, but it's just, it's helpful for them to have an awareness of where this beach is with respect to other ones, and so that's why we felt like it was important to have signage at the top. We also, um, I mean, the coastal commission added the sign at the bottom, but they also, we will have to have some sign at the top that says it's public access per the coastal commission, like, they, they, they knew we already had a sign at the top, or else they would have asked us for one. So, um, we kind of do need to keep, uh, some informational signage at the top of beach, this, the beach access.
And through, through the chair? Can, can I ask you a question?
Oh, of course.
So, you know, your, your little red map, the trail, um, I, I know this trail's really well, and, um, the Phase One trails that we've been on. So the, the ones around that, that come out of Smithfield and go down there are actually, look, to me, longer than the Redondo Beach ones, but I'm, I guess, to get an idea about how many signs you need, because I don't know, what do I know? How many are in that Phase One? Like, in, if you look at Phase One, which is a, kind of a bigger area, how many are in there? Because it seems like it's a lot less than 49.
Phase One is, uh, Phase One is much, is a much smaller area than...
Much smaller?
Than, than this project area. Yeah, it's...
Yeah, look at the red, look at the red trail map and tell me that.
This is, this is the Phase One trail, Dave, just from pop, uh, the Seymour Bridge to here.
It's a third of a mile.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
So I'm, I thought you were talking about this being Phase One.
No, that, that's part of the new, that's part of Phase Two.
Yeah, and, and the amount, this amount of trails...
Sorry about that.
Closer to two and a half miles.
Yeah, right.
A little bit, actually, under, it's under two and a half miles, um, but, uh, the one to the north, the Bird Trail, is about a third of a mile, off the top of my head. I, I should have, uh, checked that out, because I can't remember. Um, that probab- it definitely has fewer signs than this.
I, I can tell you, because I did actually count them the other day.
Oh, good.
Two, two trailhead signs, three interpretive signs, and eight, uh, please stay on the trail signs.
And I would, one of the things that we will be doing is, those signs are quite, um, old, and in need of replacement. So the replacements would be, like, the trailhead replacement would be the same as these trailheads. So there would, and then we would no longer have a trailhead sign between these, the two phases, because there's no, it's all one now. Uh, so there would just replace, we would remove that trailhead sign and just have the one at the, um, north end, after you come across the Seymour Bridge. Um, we would replace that, it would be same type as, as what you see here, to be consistent. And then the interpretive signs would be replaced with signage that's smaller, that's the same as this type as well. So it, it, to be consistent, um, but then we wouldn't be adding any new signs, um, in the, in the north area, just literally be a in-kind replacement.
So, and just so I'm clear, so I understand, it's the 49 signs plus the parking lot signs, plus the stair signs, plus the bathroom signs, where are the 49 signs included in all those areas?
I think that should be all of those, but we can look at the numbers.
I'd, I'd be happy to an- answer that question. So, so the 49 signs are the signs that require a sign permit? And the, the restroom signs and the no parking signs are not included in the 49 signs, so...
Stair, stairway ones are?
The, the ones that we see on this map are all included in the 49. Per the condition of approval, we would add two additional signs at the bottom of the stairs.
So 51 plus the parking lot plus the bathrooms?
Correct.
Sarah, I'm, thank you for that, that's very helpful to me. I, I'm sorry to, that I don't remember this, and I have to ask you to clarify, because I should remember it from our e- earlier hearing where we approved this, but, uh, over the course of all these trails, what is the extent of the split rail fence?
Um, there will be approximately, I'm trying to think of the, there'll be about, uh, there'll be about 10,000 linear feet, is that right? That sounds wrong. Um, I'd have to look it up, I don't remember. It's only, we, it, uh, well, split rail fencing is expensive, um, and it really, we want to minimize the use of it, however, there are spots where we want to, um, the biggest challenges will be the areas where people are likely to go off trail and cause the erode, because that's what's accelerating erosion, that concentrates the flow, so there are the areas, and then the others are where we want to, um, keep people off of habitat, that's, that's good habitat, like, that's important, you know, like sensitive habitat areas. So we've tried to, uh, identify, we've laid out in the, in the plans, um, where that, and that actually, it, it's actually shown in here, it's just probably hard to see, um, because, and that's why some of the, it's a dotted kind of line that has, uh, light blue, but it's, I'd have to look up, I honestly can't remember off the top of my head the linear feet, um, but the, that's why there's some areas you see the signs proposed for attaching to the split rail fence.
Yeah, I, I see that blue line on the map now that you mention it.
It's kind of hard to...
Yeah, thanks.
It's a big area to show in one map.
Are there more clarifying questions for Scott or for our applicant?
I have a few questions.
Please.
For some of those, um, edge signs, um, that are going to be on those fences, do we actually warn the public about the dangers of being near the edge, stay away from edge for their own safety?
There...
As part of the sign?
We have, um, we, the, the signs, um, that, there's a mix of hazard signs where they say stay on trail, ha, you know, um, you know, edge, you know, area, um, and then there's, there's a couple that say stay on trail, restoration area. Um, they're the same size and, but they're, the, they're, I mean, to be honest, you probably, if you really wanted to warn them, you put it around the whole thing. But there are a couple areas that, there's one area in particular, we noticed that people were kind of trying to get down and it's really danger, I mean, the whole, it's very dangerous in a lot of there, but there's one spot where people, so we purposely, even though there's no fence, we couldn't put the fencing there, so we, uh, we just put a sign that says, you know, hazardous areas, stay on, and point, the other thing is that we could include like an arrow to the, hey, beach access this way, that's the other thing. Um, in fact, I would, the best way to keep people from doing something is tell them that they can collect ticks and poison oak this way, or go that way to get to the beach. Um, so, and, you know, we could do that, and that would probably be more convincing.
I asked because I just recently was down there and saw somebody taking, you know, your classic Instagram picture of themselves at the edge of the cliff, and obviously worry for people's decision-making when it comes down to it.
Yeah.
I think the next question I had wa- uh, was about the sign that's at the very southwest corner, at the end of Redondo Beach Road. April Pro, I just, yesterday was having, um, lunch with my wife, and we met a couple from Pennsylvania that was on the trail, and accidentally went to the golf course and had no idea the golf course was there. Um, do we do any signage that says golf course ahead, danger on our side of it?
I didn't understand where, where you would...
They went down past Redondo Beach on that road, and they went the ro- the wrong direction, south.
Oh, 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 I see, so it's like...
Yeah, they kept on going and ended up in the golf course and got yelled at because they came out of the golf course on their bikes in the middle.
Um, that might be a matter of putting signage on the...
Golf course side.
Yeah, of the, of the trail, because the coastal trail technically continues it along that road, um, and so...
But do we have signage that says golf course ahead or any type of...
Yeah, I mean, but that is, that's actually the city's, um, section of the coastal trail, so I, it would make sense, like, to put a sign there, yeah, I...
As a wayfind, I'm just kind of curious whether that's one of the elements.
Yeah, I mean, I think that the map will show, um, at the trailhead there, so if you looked at it, you'd know, oh, well, if I go north, that's this, the trail, and if I go south, I'm going towards the...
Golf course.
Golf, but the, the, um, it's a little confusing, the question, because the coastal trail should go all the way through there.
Yeah, absolutely, but I guess they didn't know there was a golf course coming up, and they kept going and they found themselves in the middle of the golf course.
Damn, I'm a knuckle.
Um, just kind of curious, did we actually give indication there's a golf course ahead?
Okay.
From the signage, um, doesn't sound like it. On the stairwell access at the bottom, uh, what is the exact wording that they, we were asked to use, public access, public...
Uh, they said it had to say, Scott, do you remember?
Yeah, so we've, we've included the, the language into the condition of approval B2.
I think I missed it.
So the, the signage will need to indicate the public's right to use the stairway and trails from the beach.
So we don't have exact wording?
In, in English and Spanish.
So we don't have the exact wording, we just have the information about what type of wording we have to cover?
Correct, yes.
But there's nothing, and are those posts proposed at the bottom also wood?
Yes, everything is redwood.
Yeah. Grew up at a beach in Southern California, saw many people steal signs for firewood. I'm a little concerned about...
But we're, um, so we would not be allowed to...
Yeah.
I, you, it would be, we'd be hard pressed to get a permit to, to put, um, other type of signage in. Um, I, I would, uh, the one thing I wanted to point out about the, that is that that sign, the signs at the tops and the bottom of the, the stairs will go in at the point when the stairs are installed. So right now we have the trail, but not all the, like, there's, we wouldn't be putting in the signs about the, the beach access from the, with the stairs till we actually have the stairs in.
Got you. The maintenance of the signs, um, obviously there needs a maintenance program and it's money to keep them up, you know, I think we're seeing them degrade over time.
Yeah, and that's another thing that is part of the reason for using, um, the smaller signs, is that it's much easier to, um, to replace them as they get, you know, that it's just easier and less costly and update them if information changes. Uh, just, it's, the larger signs are much harder, like, much more expensive. The other thing, um, is, we do, uh, go out there, uh, we being Coastside Land Trust, our, um, our stewardship committee is out there, uh, cleaning signs, there's a lot, you know, graffiti happens.
Vandalism, yes, I was gonna ask about...
So we do a lot of that, it's unfortunately, uh, fair, it happens fairly frequently, so we know about cleaning them, that's for sure.
Is there vandalism resistance to the signs, like the materials?
Yeah, they, they, I mean, they're cleanable, but, uh, people still do stuff to them. Bending them is usually the, the biggest one, but that's usually with things like, um, to be honest, with no, the dogs on leash, those are the signs that get, um, mangled.
Okay. Um, any information at the top and bottom about beach use and limitations, things like fireworks and...
Yeah, so there will be, um, there's, there's some signage that's included that has like, hey, no, these things, and also the, um, there's the symbology as well, so it's not just like, so it's the, you know, no fires, no, you know, like, things like that, um, because that, yeah, so there will be exactly signs like that that are about that, that will also very importantly be in the parking lot, um, the, um, the trailhead signs, and so, so that's a requirement.
And I want to say, there's a comment, um, is, I really liked this idea of giving a distance to the next beach access north. Um, I see a lot of people do sort of one directional walk, looking for a stairwell to go up, they don't know how far it is to go.
Yeah.
So is the plan at the bottom as well to have a directional saying, next access?
No, because we probably want to keep the sign at the bottom, pretty small.
Okay.
Uh, but, uh, we, uh, that's an interesting point, I hadn't, because we hadn't proposed that sign in ours, and so I didn't think about, I, I don't know, I just...
It's a long ways to go up to find out that you should have gone north.
Yeah, no, I guess, yeah, we could, uh, do that as well, um, it just would be a little bit bigger sign, um, like one of the, what we proposed at the top, basically.
I consider that element as kind of a nice to have if you did have the opportunity.
It's a good idea.
All right, that was a, just to extend my questions, thank you.
Other, uh, questions, Commissioner Remms?
I did have some questions, but I think Chris covered them all. Uh, I was concerned about maintenance primarily, and who, who is responsible for the maintenance, and I, I think I heard that the city's not going to be responsible for any of the maintenance, including the stairs and signs and everything else. And just point of clarification, Mr. Chairman, this may, uh, give you a little chuckle, but I did a seat of the pants calculation here, three miles of trail and 49 signs, one sign per 323 feet, linear feet, so if that, that means anything, I think it's a reasonable amount, 300 feet on the average per sign. I don't have a problem with it. I don't have a problem with it. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead, please, Dave.
Okay.
Yep.
So, um, so Sarah, um, this, um, this project we approved, um, as a project. And I was surprised to see that it's actually three proj- that it's phased in three projects. And maybe it was, you know, on the planning commission that we should have directly asked, is it all going to be done at once, or is it going to be done in pieces? So, so we're having the, the parking lot built first, and then we're having the bathroom built second, and then we're having the stairs built third, is that right?
The, the, our, what we're doing is building the, we first have to build the trails and the parking to be able to then build, obviously, the restroom. Um, but also, we need an area for staging the, uh, materials for the stairs. So, um, and we have to build the, the trail before we can get access out to the stairs. So, and we're also limited on when we can do certain work. So, it couldn't happen all at once, um, anyways. But, uh, right now, they're going to be finishing up the trail in October.
Okay.
And then, um, that's what, and the signs, you know, that's, will, will go in and we'll be able to, that, and the parking lots will be open, it is true, though, that we won't be, have the stairs or the restrooms done, but there's no point in keeping people from parking there right now. I mean, that's, we want to, we have to close off the end of Redondo Beach Road, uh, because we're trying to restore, we're going to be re- vegetating and restoring that, and so, we have to open up the parking. Um, and then we are, then we will be working on the stairs. The stairs are, are hand construction, it's, it's a carpentry project.
I understand, but-
So, that'll happen, um, that's going to take a while, um, and so, we're, you know, that'll happen. Ideally, we're going to try to do that, um, over the winter, but we'll see whether the, um, the, uh, agencies, the, uh, will, will allow that, um, CDFW and the water board.
Winter this year?
This year, yeah.
Okay.
Sorry, like, that's what we're, we're pushing for, but we'll see if they allow it. And then the, uh, for the restroom, we remember that that involves, uh, installation of, uh, extending the water main. And so, we're also limited on when we can do that. Now, in our original, when we brought this before the, um, the planning commission, we were going to be able to tie into a section of main that is now, um, been, it's, it's the, uh, water district has, it's abandoned it, which is fine, but that means we have to install a short section of main. And we, again, we are limited on when we can do that work. We also had to, that is a longer permit process with the water district, we have to do that for, uh, that's, it's, we've been told that that's going to take about six months. So, we're still pushing, we're moving that forward, um, we've, you know, got the, the, the plans for, you know, ready for that permitting, um, but it's going to take a bit longer, it's not, and things have changed. This project went through many years of review and circumstances changed that are beyond our, uh, but we, I, I, I want to be clear that we are not phasing it because, we are doing everything. Um, it may have to wait because we have other, um, regulatory limitations on when we can work. Um, and there's physical kind of, uh, limitations as well on how, what we can do at the same time. Um, and so, we had to get the parking and the trail access in first, before we could do the other parts of the project. And unfortunately, we may be limited on whether we can work in the winter on the stairs. If we can, we are, we'll, we'll move forward, we have the money for it, we're, we're ready.
Okay, so that's helpful.
Yeah, and we have, and we also have money for the restroom, just so you know, like, there's no-
I was like, oh, God, it's going to be like, years-
Well, it may be next year, end of next year, when we get both the rest of the things in, but, um, we will, we want it done as soon as possible as well, because, keep in mind, costs for construction just continue to-
Well, and also, I mean, if you're inviting people to come in, you're increasing the traffic on, on this area, and those stairs, uh, already are eroded away, and you're just inviting more people to go down those stairs, particularly during wet weather, and it's just going to get, like, I'm, I'm worried about that cliff.
Parking will be less, because they no longer will have-
Say it again?
They, well, there's, they have the entire end at the, at the end, it will be closed off, and, um, they were, they shouldn't be parking on, if the city will install the no parking on, along Redondo Beach Road, there will be, that's, so, there's a lot of casual parking going on.
There is, but it's not seventy-two spots.
Formalizing that parking, and, uh, so I would argue that the situation will not be attracting more.
Okay, we can arm wrestle over that one.
It, um, and to be clear, the, there will be, the entire end will be fenced off. Like, there will be no access for cars at the end of Redondo Beach Road.
Well, and no access to try to kill yourself going down that cliff, which is what people do right now. So, that's great. And actually, if I had to, if I had to do anything in this project, if I, if it was going to be phased, I would probably start with that, um, those stairs, to, like, encourage people to go the right way. Um, and to shore up that cliff, but I get what you're saying.
And we wanted to, and we're trying to get a permit.
I get what you're saying, okay.
Because that, that's a dependent on, like, timing for the, um, resource agencies.
Yeah. Um, we're also inviting people to go to an area that doesn't have a bathroom, so-
Which is no different than now.
I think we're, we're straying a little from clarifying questions.
I know, but, um, this is something that we approved before, and it looked like it was different. And you're saying it's not, so, thank you.
Scott, one tiny question for you, and in the sign code, what does the term frontage mean?
When we read through our sign code, there, there are a couple of different, uh, definitions of frontage. There's, uh, there's business frontage, there's, and there's street frontage. So, um, and business frontage does include, uh, you know, contiguous parking lots, you know, for, you know, in shopping centers, it's, it's really more of a, um, applicable to more of a, you know, commercial setting, so-
Hard to translate that to trails.
Exactly, and I, I, I think it really, you know, emphasizes the reasons why a sign program is appropriate in this case.
Yeah. Are there any more clarifying questions for our applicant or for staff? Well, let's invite public comment in that case, folks in the room or online.
I have none, in person or online.
All right, well, in that case, we invite deliberations by planning commissioners. Who would like, who would like to kick it off?
So-
Vice Chair Goran?
Um, it's a lot of signs. Um, but then, when you start to look at what each sign says and what it does, they all seem to have their purpose. And, um, so, um, I'm not a design person, so I couldn't tell you. I would say, um, you might want to think about the number of interpretive signs, um, because those do get in the way of enjoying sort of, like, the wildness of the place, because it's so beautiful out there, and I don't really want to be, you know, reading another sign about the red-tailed hawk, but, um, but I would leave that up to everybody else. That's my only sort of, uh, concern about the signs.
Thank you for that. Commissioner Rems?
I would just ask, uh, Commissioner Doran, what's the alternative? If we take that signs out, no signs?
Um, fewer interpretive signs?
Or a book that they, they hand out and-
The interpretive signs?
Yeah.
Nothing? Why do you have to have interpretive signs? I mean, you could have one or two, if you really want them, or three or four, but it seems like-
Some people, like me, are environmentally challenged, and I don't understand all these critters that are floating around there. So, I would be appreciative to know which critters are going to cross my path. Just my opinion.
Mm-hmm.
I don't want to be argumentative or anything, but I just don't think there's, I don't think there's a lot of signs there for the, for the linear feet of trail that we're talking about.
But it's not hard to imagine that different users of this space will have varying points of view about the open space versus signs. Commissioner Donacro?
I'd be concerned if the interpretives were very duplicitous. If you had repeatedly the same thing on each one, it's one thing to have some information about a species in one area where maybe the most prominent, uh, area where they are. Um, that obviously, to me, would be kind of overkill to do more than one interpretive about one species. Um, I think also, your, your, Commissioner Reins' point about the three hundred and twenty-two feet between signs, you know, I can't read a sign three hundred and twenty-two feet away, am I really seeing it all that clear from that far away? No, probably not. Obviously, some are going to be closer than others. Um, I do think the posts vanish very quickly in your eyesight, um, you don't really interfere with views, so it's more the bigger signs that you worry about, and those are at key positions. So, I don't have much problem with those, but, um, I would agree that, obviously, duplicitous to interpretive signs may be problematic to-
Well, so, I just meant that we're, you know, you're out walking on the cliffs, you're out walking on the bluffs, and it's beautiful, like, that's, it's, it's a great, it's just a beautiful place. And so, if you have a sign in the middle of that, it takes away from that wild feeling, sort of a wild experience. And, you know, I don't mind, like, one or two or whatever, but if you have one, and then you have another, and then you have another, it gives you this feeling of, like, I'm on a walkway that could be, you know, like, the walkway around Alcatraz. It's not the same, so, that's all. I mean, it, it's, um, you know, um, I don't feel strongly about it, but I do love it out there. And as, as everyone involved with this thing does, I want to make sure that it's not a, uh, signed by committee proposal, right? Like, you know, everybody wants their sign out, and so, I would, I would be cautious about how many interpretive signs you have, because that experience of being out in the, out in the wild is really cool.
To the chair, I, I do see from the count here on the table that it's, this is five split rail interpretive signs and seven primary and secondary post-interpretive signs. So, it's really that, that totality of, of signs of twelve.
Yeah, and I, I think, you know, I'm conflicted on this because I'm personally very curious and I think almost always welcome things like interpretive signs, but I know firsthand that when Phase One of the CLT trail went in, there were folks in my neighborhood who said, you know, they took perfectly good open space and they're, they're trying to channel it and restrict it and regulate it, and so, so there are some folks for whom the more is not necessarily more when it comes to things like that, so. I, but, you know, I don't pretend to have any expertise in what the right number of signs is. I think Vice Chair Goran is pretty articulate, though, I guess, if I, if I had to weigh in, I would feel more comfortable with a, a number that's somewhat less than twelve interpretive signs, just, just for, you know, for the point of making sure that it's clear that we do cherish the open space experience out there.
Can we ask the question about the duplicitous, or any of them duplicates of each other in different locations?
That's a good question.
I think, um, so, you're asking about, like, having repetitive information, yeah. So, um, I will say that the signs for the tops of the stairs, I would almost not consider those interpretive, because they're more just straight informational. So, but they probably are included in your interpretive numbers. Um, definitely, we had felt that, that we did not want to have this be just about the different species. We thought it would be, there could be a more history, there could be, you know, a sign about histor- historical references, you know, and, and, uh, criteria, uh, context of the area. Um, there would be, it, it would be fun to do one that's more about the actual, what actually restoration is. Um, that one would probably not be facing at the edge of the bluffs, it would be more inland, um, because it's a nice opportunity to kind of think, looking in that direction. Um, but we had really wanted to avoid doing repetitive, uh, you know, having the same information or just having a series of signs that were just about different species, uh, because, because we felt that that wasn't very interesting. I have to say that I think that, um, so I think that, Commissioner Goran, you raised a really good point. Um, so, what about, uh, maybe I could propose that not counting the two at the top of the stairs, uh, but the, but maybe just propose to start off with a reduced number, and then if, you know, and, and then if it seems like it's something where, oh, it would be really nice to have the opportunity to put another interpretive sign, then we can come to the, to the, uh, uh, to the development director or to the planning commission, I can't, I'm not sure how, how that would, but to, to propose putting in another sign, but for now, maybe reduce it to a number that feels much like it would preserve the wildness, which is a, a really good point, um, so.
I would also, I could suggest, like, at Sutra Baths in San Francisco, they have a lot of interpretive signs right around the parking lot, and then when you go out on the trail to go, there, there are fewer of them. And so, you get the history and you get, like, if you, if what you want, you're parking there and you're getting a sense of what the place is and what it used to be, that's all around the parking lot. And then there's, there's a few other signs along the trail, but it's just not very many, so, that's all.
Then that, that's a good idea, we could propose to move, like, one or two by the, as you come out of the two parking lots, because that is, you're right, that's an entry spot, um, yeah, I'm, we're open to that, and, and I think that if that's, like, it, these are good points.
I, I think your, your suggestion seems very constructive to me, Sarah. If you were willing to live with, you know, the two at the top of the stairs and say six instead of twelve, I'd, I, I would support that. I also wanted to say that the, the variety of signs that you have on Phase One of the trail and also that exist along the Cowal-Purisima Trail, I've, I've been very impressed with both of those groups. There, there's a nice variety of them in there, it's not just a snake, a frog, a bird.
May I make a suggestion?
Please.
Um, there is a section in the sign program code that provides for the community development director to make minor changes, um, to the signs. So, you could, um, place a limit on the number of signs, and then if, um, they found that, say, they needed an additional stay-on-the-trail sign, you know, in a hazardous location or something, they could come to the commu- to me, um, for approval of that sign, um, if the planning commission was okay with that idea.
Sure.
Yeah, fine with that, I mean, it's, it's, it's almost more, um, um, what's the word? I don't know the word, sorry. Where we're suggesting rather than making some kind of, like, complaint.
How do commissioners feel about the, the concept of limiting the interpretive signs to something like I suggested, two at the top of the stairs and six rather than twelve?
To the chair.
You're only cutting out four?
Well, I think there's twelve in, in this proposal between the rail and the primary.
To the chair, um, I really appreciate the applicant's flexibility and willingness to work on that. I do like the idea of limiting to start with a potential for future expansion. If there's some opinion that this is, you know, better in the future to add more. Um, I do appreciate the wildness of the cliffs in the area, and I do think that argument does hold great strength.
Mr. Chairman, uh, my position is, um, I don't care how many signs are there, if, a lot or a little.
I don't beat around the bush, Jim.
The, the, the impact, the impact that the signs have is de minimis compared to three miles of gravel and split rail fence and stairs going down to the ocean. It's minor, okay? It, to me, it, it's, you know, it's not worth, you know, arguing about. So, if you want to do what you want to do, I'm, I'm okay with that, if the applicant's okay with that. But, uh, you know, it's really the applicant who's making the proposal, and then we have to try to find a common, common ground here. So, I'm going to vote for their proposal regardless of which way you go. It just, I just think that the impact is greater, you know, with the gravel, the split, split rail and the stairs than the signs. Thank you.
No, well, thank you for that point of view. I, I will reiterate that I, I have some experience with, uh, being on the receiving end of people with different points of views about such things, so, it's okay to acknowledge there's a range of points of views.
Um, would you like to, should, I mean, you're the one that's going to, do you want to make a motion for it? Would that appropriate?
Would we, uh, I just want to double check again with, with our applicant- Would we, I just want to double-check again with our applicant if that is a reasonable way forward.
Yes, entirely. So, I'm very flexible, or I think we are very flexible. So, and, I mean, I think this kind of, to be honest, makes more sense to see how, to be flexible and see how things go. I'd rather under sign and then figure out, oh, whoops, maybe we need another, and we can, that would be preferable to overdoing it, in my opinion.
Thank you for that. Director Laco or Marlene, what the best way to amend these numbers about the interpretive signs would be an amendment or a condition of approval, or what?
I think you can just make a motion, including the cap that you want to put on the signs. Yeah.
Okay.
And I don't have the resolution language in front of me, because I got too absorbed in the plans.
Well, I'll take a stab at a motion if folks are ready. So, I move we approve the resolution at hand for the sign program and sign permit with the change to the number of interpretive signs being reduced from 12 to 6, but not, this does not count the two at the top of the stairs.
I have a clarifying question on that point. Are the two signs at the top of the stairs among the 12 interpretive signs? If they are, then you'd want to clarify that it'd be a reduction from 10 to 6 other interpretive signs.
Scott, do you know the answer to that? Because...
Yes, they are included in the 12.
So, really, we're just cutting by four, right? From basically 12 to 8?
Again, I'm saying that we're flexible to whatever you decide. I don't want to get rid of all interpretive signs, but, yeah, so, we're okay with what you're, whatever, if you're proposing the six include the two, and we have four other interpretive, I don't know, however you want.
No, I'm sensitive to their special nature, so I would say we're going from 12 to eight, inclusive in both numbers of the two at the top of the stairs. May I have a second to that?
Sure, second.
No, well, I think...
I don't think, you never, roll call? I was just writing...
The director is talking to the attorney for a moment.
We got it worked out.
Okay. Bridget, may we have a roll call, please?
Yes, Commissioner Rems?
Yes.
Commissioner Donagro?
Yes.
Commissioner Gorn?
Yes, please.
Chair Riddick?
Yes.
Motion approved, 4-0.
Thank you, Sarah. That brings us to the director's report, if I remember my agenda correctly.
All right. Well, thank you, Chair Riddick and commissioners. I do hope that you enjoyed your summer off. That was not our intention. We did have items continuously fall off of the agenda for one reason or another. But at this point, we do have a pretty busy fall ahead of us. And we didn't just sit around all summer, just in case you were wondering. Scott has been working on configuring the new cloud permit system for planning permits. So, we're expecting that to go online in the later fall, which is a big change for us. ACOE's been working on code updates for the objective design standards, and Marlene has been helping us with that. And we've also reached agreement with HCD staff on the final, what we hope will be the final changes to the housing element. So, we went ahead and circulated the SEQA document for that. And we also made significant progress on the safety element update, and we're taking draft policies to the Technical Advisory Committee this week, actually. And we're finalizing the $500,000 grant agreement with the Coastal Commission for the implementation plan update. So, in addition to that, we issued a permit at 2411 Cabrillo Highway for, I think I might have told you guys about this one already, three new pre-manufactured mobile homes that are affordable. And then at 501 Main Street, where City Hall is, we issued a permit for the construction of a car port. That's, that word always catches me. And with solar photovoltaic array on it. So, and then we did another sign permit for half-moon play, very clever. And also, an emergency CDP for remediation of the graded site out at Cabrillo Highway and Highway 92. And a permit at 400 Redondo Beach Road for an addition to single-family residents. And 701 Purissima Street, construction of ADU and garage conversion. At 431 Spruce Street, a new detached ADU. And then finally, for 2800 Champs-Elysees, which I know I pronounced incorrectly, the Coastal Commission found in that appeal that there was no substantial issue. In the future, coming up, September 23rd, we're gonna bring the Taco Bell sign program, sign permit, I think it was switched from a sign program to a sign permit. Is that correct, Scott? Yeah. And also, the Smithfield Coastal Development Permit and SEQA Document, which is a mitigated NIC deck. Also, the piece, the Planning Commission will be briefed on the objective design standard code updates in October. The housing element and SEQA document will come to you at the second meeting in October. And then we'll bring the safety element forward, probably in November, in a joint Planning Commission and City Council study session. And we will have staff reaching out to you to try to organize that meeting soon. And then, once the grant agreement for the implementation plan with the Coastal Commission is finalized, we'd like to come back to the Planning Commission for feedback on how the Planning Commission would like to be involved in this process, maybe an ad hoc committee or... Anyways, that'll be a part of the discussion that we will bring to you later. And then, if we can squeeze it in, we would like to do a briefing on AB 130 and 131, which relaxed some of the SEQA requirements for certain projects. And that would be Marlene bringing that forward. That concludes my report. Thank you very much.
May I ask you, that agreement with HCD, does it touch on the question of Measure D and ADUs?
It does. It does. It's on the website now, it's posted, so you can check out the language. It's, it would, it instructs us to come back to Planning Commission and Council with code amendments for half an allocation for ADUs, and also for some procedural changes that would carry over unused Measure D allocations. That's the crux of it. So, that's, those were the major changes that we worked out with HCD. And HCD was more amenable to those now because they have had continuous meetings with the California Coastal Commission, and they have a better understanding of what the demands are on the coast. And I think the Coastal Commission has similarly a better understanding of what HCD is looking for, so... Where we were previously caught between the two agencies, we're seeing a light at the end of the tunnel, I hope.
Yeah, well, nice to have resolution of that. Do you have any idea what the timing might be for those things becoming part of our code?
I do not. There's a couple ways that we could approach that. We could approach it as a separate code amendment. We can fold it into the update of the implementation plan. That will likely be a phased approach. There's, I don't think there's any realistic way to do it all in one fell swoop. So, it could be an early phase of that. So, I'm not sure what that looks like yet. We only get three LCP amendments per year with the Coastal Commission, and with the code amendment for the ADUs, should that pass, we'd be, and the implementation plan, we'd really be bumping up against that number, so...
Well, thank you for that update.
Oh, right, and the objective design standards, that, I knew I was missing something. Yeah.
Commissioner Rems?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think I missed something in your report. Madam Director, did you mention the appeal for the Redondo Beach Road closing at all?
I did not. I think that was in the last...
Was it in the last one?
The last director's report, yeah.
What happened?
The Coastal Commission, we withdrew that coastal development permit, because they were going to deny it, most likely. The staff recommended denial. And that would put us in a position that would make it difficult to be able to do a little more research and come back with a different proposal if we wanted.
So, the gate stays open?
The gate stays open. The gate has been open, and it stays open. And we have been working with the sheriff on getting better security out there. Yeah.
Thank you. Do any commissioners have any communications to offer up? May we have a motion to adjourn?
Make a motion to adjourn the meeting?
I'll second it. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. Meeting adjourned.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.